Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, April 19, Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please, Tom.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson? Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Knightser?
Here.
Selberg?
All right. With us tonight to give our invocation is Pat Duport from the Direct Line Prayer Center. This is her first time, so go easy on her. Pat, thank you for being here. I'd ask that you stand for that, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pray with me. Heavenly Father, Creator of all things, we thank you for this day made for us and filled with hope and life and goodness. Not only have you created this day for us, you've created us for this day. Thank you for your presence and blessings over this great city of Sioux Falls. We are grateful for your hand in the affairs of men. Before the creation of all things, you saw this place, this day, and the men and women who are leading and making decisions on behalf of the people, city, and land of Sioux Falls. Father, we ask for your spirit of wisdom and revelation to fall upon each councilman and councilwoman and upon our mayor. You have appointed and anointed each of them to lead during this moment in history. May they be filled with godly discernment, having ears to hear and eyes to see, to rightly divide what comes before them. With the authority given to them by you and by the people, may they rule with sincerity, compassion, wisdom, and love, bringing about prosperity for our city and the people that live and do business here. Father, thank you for leading, guiding, and presiding over this meeting on April the 19th, 2022. Your great mercy and love for Sioux Falls and all who dwell and work here is so very evident. Today, we acknowledge again your greatness and your goodness for us. I pray for all matters brought before this council this evening, to be done so with dignity and honor, in a spirit of cooperation to bring forth understanding of opinions and positions. It is in that spirit we will find unity to move forward in courage and strength. We are so very grateful for this city, state, and nation for which we live, a place where freedoms have been fought for and continue to be fought for, a place to be heard, seen, and a part of something bigger than each of us individually, a place where it has been declared and we declare again that under God, the people rule. God bless those who present matters before this council tonight. Bless each council member and our mayor as they serve and make decisions this day and in the days ahead. It's in your mighty and powerful name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its new republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thanks, Pat, for your invocation. We'll move on to item four. It's our consent agenda. Any changes to be made there?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull subitem 39 from Agenda Item Six, please.
All right. Any other changes tonight? All right. Look for a motion, then.
So moved, Jensen.
Second. Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion there? All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. Move ahead to item 28. Regular agenda. Look for a motion to approve that, please.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second. Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there, Councilor Jensen?
I'd make a motion to amend by moving items 58 and 59 to immediately following item 50.
Second. Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen to move those two items accordingly, seconded by Sale. Any discussion? All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. Back to the main motion, then, as amended. Any other changes here? All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. Before we go on with our agenda, just run a review of public input. How that will work tonight. Regular agenda items comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. That being said, let's move on to our next item.
Mayor, the next item is subitem 39 from Agenda Item Six, Technology Website Content Management System Agreement to Award a Bid, Open Cities, $425,000, 593.
All right. Councilor Starr?
Yes, thank you. Director Grigsby's agreed to be here and answer some questions for me, so I appreciate that greatly, so.
Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Mike Grigsby, Director of Innovation and Technology.
Thank you, Director, for being here tonight. Maybe I'll make it really simple. Why do we need a new website? Cut right to the chase.
That does make it easy. The current website, we've been on for 10 years, and the services available, the features available in it, are beyond what the demand is from both our residents and from our internal services, internal employee needs. We know that we need new features, and so that was one of the impetus driving the new change for the website platform.
When you put the RFP together, who did you put on the team, and how did you come up with the criteria for what you were looking for for a new website? Who did you talk to?
Certainly. Part of the process, we obviously had some internal discussions with our own team, but we engaged a consultant called Marketplace.City. They are a procurement consultant for cities. They helped us put the requirements together for our RFP based on what our needs are, projected both our current needs as well as our projected needs in the future. Once that was together, then we put together a selection team based out of different department members. So we went across the organization primarily with a focus to look at the functionality of the website, not so much the look and feel, but definitely the functionality, because we need to, we just need a strong digital framework to move forward.
How many proposals did you receive?
We had 19 respondents to the overall RFP. We called that list down to five, and from that five, we got a shortlist of three respondents that we had, that we considered our finalists.
And then you ended up with, I keep going back and forth whether it's the name of the group, I'm sorry.
Open Cities.
Open Cities.
So Open Cities was the initial respondent. They were purchased during that process by Granicus, and so the final agreement is with Granicus.
I guess where I'm confused just a little bit, if you can help me, they talk about, Open Cities talks, and Granicus talks a lot about content management, and so we have current users within the city that, whether it's the clerk's office or building services, or I'm assuming the health department has some things that they use, but the public uses the clerk's office software quite a bit, and so does probably building services. How does that, I mean, is the overall plan to move those into the new website, or how do we take, because I think we use OnBase and C Click Fix as an app and some of those things. How does that fit into the overall website plan?
That was one of the considerations that we looked at, was integrations with other tools, existing tools, existing resources, as well as those that we might have in the future. So how, you used OnBase as an example, OnBase will integrate with the system, with the platform, moving forward.
And you checked with the clerk's office to make sure that that would happen? They participated in the process, yeah, or how with OnBase, or how do we know when we start building a new website that OnBase works with the vendor we selected?
As part of our agreements, we knew, or, excuse me, part of our requirements, we already knew what some of our tools were, and so that was part of the requirements that we put out in the RFP.
Any other questions?
Yeah, if I can, Mr. Mayor. So the clerk's office, building services, some of those people were all consulted and part of the selection process, or did any of them participate in the selection?
Not per se, and I think it's important to kind of note the difference between the RFP and what will eventually be in the web project. So the RFP focused, again, on the framework and the architecture for the platform. When we move forward into the project itself, we will consult with multiple departments, multiple stakeholders, including the public at certain points, from a final look and feel and feature component, but as far as the functionality, which was the primary component of the RFP, that's what we focused on.
So the public wasn't involved either, then, in the selection?
Not in this particular way, no.
Not at this part. Thank you.
Councilor Sale?
So you mentioned that our last web is about 10, web platform's about 10 years old?
Correct.
How long do you project that this new platform will last for us?
It's, obviously, it's difficult to say how long it will be, but we anticipate being on this for multiple years. Our current contract is for five years, but we anticipate that the platform provides a foundation that we can build on for many, many years.
Thank you.
Other questions on this? Councilor Knightser?
Well, since you're here and the subject is brought up, it's been a couple of years since I looked at it, but it used to be if you wanted to make a change, like, for example, if our internal audit wanted to make a change to their website, they'd put in a ticket, and then you would have to do it, for the most part. I mean, they really couldn't change things. And there's a value to that, of course, because you don't want just all kinds of changes happening without having some oversight, I suppose, but will this platform allow a little bit more where, I don't know how it works today, but there's all kinds of different boards with liaisons, and they're putting up agendas and all this different stuff. So you have all these different people that have pages that are kind of theirs, but they may have to put in a ticket, and then you may have to do all of it. Is it going to be a little bit more where certain people can?
Again, that was one of the requirements that we looked for on the new platform, is usability, and being able to identify other users across the department to be able to manage their own content and certainly get a faster turnaround in certain respects. There's always going to be the components, the requests that require advanced level skill sets, and that will still come in through a ticketing system, but through cooperation with our team. But for the most part, we're trying to make the usability a lot better for the users across the department.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Can we get a motion on this item?
Move to approve, Sale.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Any other discussion here, then? Councilor Starr?
I just, more of a comment. This stands out as another one of those places that the council probably should have had someone as part of it. I don't have any more questions, but it's a continuing process where we talked about it earlier this afternoon and have to continually make suggestions to be included in the process, and we're not being included in the process on RFPs like this and other things that, as we move forward on different items. So that's why I pulled this from the agenda. It's a five-year commitment that more is as much a policy decision of how the functionality and how this will work, and to be excluded from that is anything but open or transparent. So, thank you.
All right. Before we take a vote, anyone from the public want to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none? Let's take a vote, then, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Item 29, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for MG Oil Company, Mint Casino 3, 3607 East 10th Street, with conditional use permit 2013-6-03 being approved on July 3, 2013, pending final inspections for building services. Item 30, request to add video lottery terminals with 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for MG Oil Company, Mint Casino 3, 3607 East 10th Street. Item 31, renewal of 2022-23 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for Mint Casino 3, 3607 East 10th Street. Item 32, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for MG Oil Company, Mint Casino 4, 3609 East 10th Street, with conditional use permit 2013-6-03 being approved on July 3, 2013, pending final inspections for building services. Item 33, request to add video lottery terminals with 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for MG Oil Company, Mint Casino 4, 3609 East 10th Street. Item 34, renewal of 2022-23 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for Mint Casino 4, 3609 East 10th Street. Item 35, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for Gilberto's 10th Street LLC, 3603 East 10th Street, CUP not required. Item 36, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License and new 2022 retail wine and cider license, requesting off-sale use only for Dolgan Midwest LLC Dollar General Store, number 22751, 2701 East 17th Street, CUP not required. Item 37, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License, requesting off-sale use only for Olson Oil Company, Get 'N Go, number 24, 1200 East 10th Street, CUP not required. New, item 38, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for L. Paragloss Group LLC, 421 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 119, CUP not required. Item 39, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for West Winds Casino Incorporated, 4609 West Home Field Drive, Suite 102, CUP not required, pending final inspections for building services. Item 40, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License for West Winds Casino Incorporated, 4609 West Home Field Drive, Suite 102. Item 41, new 2022 retail wine and cider license for DDK LLC, JJ's Billiards, 309 South Elmwood Avenue, CUP not required. Item 42, transfer of 2022 retail liquor license, including video lottery terminals, and transfer of 2022 packaged liquor license from South Dakota Veterans Alliance Incorporated, 1600 West Russell Street to South Dakota Veterans Alliance Incorporated, 1600 West Russell Street, 1700 West Russell Street, and 1300 North Industrial Avenue. Item 43, transfer of 2022 retail liquor license from T-180 LLC Tavern 180, 2101 West 69th Street, Suite 107, to Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company Incorporated, Tavern 180, 2101 West 69th Street, Suite 107. Item 44, request to add video lottery terminals with the 2022 retail liquor license for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company Incorporated, Tavern 180, 2101 West 69th Street, Suite 107. Item 45, special one-day liquor license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Five Oaks Event Venue, 480 East 69th Street for a wedding on April 23, 2022. Item 46, special one-day liquor license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Sanford Event Barn, 2510 East 54th Street North for an event on April 28, 2022. Item 47, special one-day malt beverage license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Ronkin Field, 1401 West 33rd Street and Bowden Field, 1501 West 33rd Street for ball games on April 30 and May 1, 2022. Item 48, special one-day wine license for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at Hotel on Phillips, 100 North Phillips Avenue, Nyberg's Ace, 200 East 12th Street, Great Outdoor Store, 201 East 10th Street, Flora Bell's, 206 South Phillips Avenue, Mint Plus Basil, 207 South Phillips Avenue, Home Porch Gifts, 217 South Phillips Avenue, Chelsea's Boutique, 220 South Phillips Avenue, American State Bank, 223 South Phillips Avenue, Say Anything Jewelry, 225 South Phillips Avenue, JLG Architects, 232 South Main Avenue, Friends of South Dakota Public Broadcasting, 300 North Dakota Avenue, number 104, Jan Ray Events, 301 South Minnesota Avenue, number 2, Beckhold Jewelry, 325 South Phillips Avenue, TH Gray, 330 South Phillips Avenue, Common Sense, 400 South Second Avenue, Prairie Sea Dessert Bar, 401 East 8th Street, number 105, Athan Railroad Center, 401 East 8th Street, number 200A, Simply Perfect, 401 East 8th Street, number 108, Stixton Steel, 401 East 8th Street, number 118, Envive Chiropractic, 412 South First Avenue, Decu Trees, 421 North Phillips Avenue, number 128, Intoxa Bakes, 421 North Phillips Avenue, number 111, Henna Harvest, 421 North Phillips Avenue, number 107, Ray Fields Art and Framing, 431 North Phillips Avenue for an art and wine walk on May 6, 2022. And item 49, special one-day malt beverage license for LifeScape to be operated at Vernite, Mitsubishi, 4501 East Arrowhead Parkway, Suite 101 for a fundraiser on June 11, 2022.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jamie.
Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have on items 29 through 49.
Would you like Tom to read those again?
Yeah.
Number 48, please.
Anyone from the, anyone from the public here to speak on any of those items tonight? All right, council, you have any questions for Jamie on any of these? All right. Look for a motion.
Move approval?
Knightser?
Jensen.
All right. Motion by Knightser, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right. Let's vote on those, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. Move to item 50, please.
Item 50, second reading and ordinance to the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations, facilities, $1 million, fire, $2,685,000, police, $80,000, library, $50,000, highways and streets, $6 million, and parks and recreation, $3,855,000. Sponsors, the mayor.
Sean, good evening, sir.
Good evening, council. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. This is second reading of the appropriation. That was, had first reading two weeks ago. I went into pretty significant detail. I'll attempt not to repeat that this evening, but we'll just give you a quick refresher on what you're going to be voting on in relation to this item. At the financial presentation this afternoon, we talked about the sales and use tax fund at the end of 2021, having a surplus balance of $11.7 million, which is the primary intent of most of the supplements that you will see in front of you today, this evening. We also are going to be proposing to reallocate about $2 million in ARPA funding. Actually, it's a total of $2.4 million in ARPA funding that was originally slated for the Washington Pavilion Parapet Project, and I'll talk about that here a little bit more. But $2 million of that would free up funds within the sales tax fund, allowing $13.7 million to be supplemented here this evening. Just a quick summary of everything, not going into each project in detail, but the primary recommendations as they're brought forward, as we discussed two weeks ago, the first basis being cost escalation, certainly is something that we're seeing in the market right now in terms of construction materials and high demand for limited supplies. So $4.5 million is being allocated to the major street reconstruction program in order to try to keep some of our significant construction projects for 2022, stay, keep them on course. Jacobson Plaza, which you had an informational on a couple of weeks ago, and will be brought up in a gifting agreement later this evening, about, there's a $3.5 million request, but that total overall project, about $2.5 to $2.5 million has been related to cost escalation. Not everything with materials, part of it is dealing with site design and environmental challenges there. And then OSEP equipment purchases that we were intending for this year for police, fire, and parks and recreation. There were increases on several items that need to be acquired this year. The second item is the sidewalks and ADA compliance piece. There is a $1 million request from the sales and use tax, and these are for the city's portion of the ADA compliance related to intersections and ramps, and those are paid for from the sales and use tax fund. We have a $1.4 million general fund request, which will increase the general fund. We anticipate about $700,000 in additional revenue coming in. Ultimately, most, all of this will be reimbursed to the city through invoicing. These are for sidewalks. The city will replace in lieu of the homeowner, should they not choose to do it themselves. And then again, as you heard a couple of weeks ago, there is a new grant program that we established for emergency repairs for homes, which can also be utilized for sidewalks for those who are not able to afford it. We are looking to repurpose the ARPA funds, as I mentioned. So the first $2.5 million we're repurposing is related to the public safety training facility. We had allocated $2.5 million, or you had reallocated $2.5 million last year, in addition to $2.5 million additional funds for the sales tax, and then the funds that were available from the bond. It's going to be challenging for us, based on the guidelines and bidding requirements from the ARPA, so we would look to replace that with $2.5 million of clean sales tax money and move that over to the River Greenway project. We had expected to get an EDA grant for that project. We did not receive that grant, and so this would fill that hole for the grant that we anticipated to receive. We already have ARPA funding in that project anyway, so since we're already going to be bound by some of those federal bidding requirements, we're trying to consolidate the funding into one. And then, as I previously mentioned, we had $2.4 million that was previously allocated to the entertainment tax to assist with the Washington Pavilion cornice and parapet replacement. We actually allocated $4.6 million. We're going to look to reduce that by $2.4 for a couple of reasons. Revenue has exceeded expectations. The entertainment tax has bounced back. In addition, the cost of that project has been reduced significantly. So we're able to reduce that, looking to reallocate that to other projects. The $2 million would go into the River Greenway Phase 3 project, keeping it consolidated, all of the ARPA money. $2 million would be freed up and utilized toward the Jacobson Plaza project. That would be clean sales tax money. And then $400,000 is being allocated to the general fund for health and to be utilized for the Eat Well Sioux Falls Grant Program that was spoke today about at the informational presentation. Jacobson Plaza, as you heard about a couple of weeks at the informational, it's a total of a $3.5 million request with the $2 million that we're reallocating from other projects. It's a net of $1.5 million in new funding, and the donor is bringing forward an additional $3.5 million as part of that project as well, and that gifting agreement is later on, on this agenda. Finally, the last kind of other catchhalls in terms of the sales and use tax requests, strategic land acquisition for $1 million, highways and streets system compliant radios, $500,000, the zoo sanitary sewer for $120,000, recreational trail reconstruction, $150,000, and then libraries and shutout litter, see, to expand the books in that area by $50,000. As we showed a couple of weeks ago, this is the totality of the breakdown of the $13.7 million. We'll still retain $4.9 million in reserves within this to hedge against interest rate and economic impacts as we go forward. And then just a couple of general ones here. So the general fund portions of this appropriation, the $400,000 that goes to the Eat Well Sioux Falls Grant Program, and the reallocated ARPA funding, and then, as I spoke to before, the $1.4 in the ADA sidewalk replacements is also a general fund, so everything else that is going to be coming from the sales and use tax fund. And then the only item also that's combined into this appropriation that is not related to use of surplus sales and use tax funds is $115,000 for a medication dispensing system for the Department of Health that is funded by a grant and not by our surplus dollars. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, Sean, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 50 tonight? All right, councilors, you have any questions for Sean on any of the items presented in item 50 here?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Brecky. Discussion, council, on this. All right. Seeing none? Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. Move to item 58, moved by amendment.
Item 58, a resolution amending the 2022-26 capital program, facilities, management, fire, police, library, public works, highways and streets, parks and recreation, entertainment venues, Washington Pavilion, sponsors, the mayor.
Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance, again. So this is the complimentary resolution that amends the capital program for all of the projects that have capital program components. Again, I won't read all of these out, but they include all of the centralized, the land acquisition, the fire OSEP, the public safety training facility, the police OSEP, the library OSEP, the ADA sidewalks for highways and streets, the street reconstruction, I should say $4.5 million, not $2.5 million, $500,000 for radio replacements, and then the various parks projects, the $2.5 million for the River Greenway Phase 3. This does increase the size of the project, because we hadn't appropriated it yet or increased the size based on the EDA grant. The $2 million of reallocated funding does not increase the size of the CIP project. $7 million for Jacobson Plaza, that includes the $3.5 million from the city and the $3.5 million from the Jacobson family, the zoo, rec trails, the various OSEP items for parks and recreation, and then finally, the entertainment venues, $2.4 million reduction of the ARPA funds that had been previously for the Washington Pavilion cornice and parapet project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that item.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 58, then? All right, council, any questions here? Take a motion to approve this item, then?
Move to approve? Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Approve 58. Any discussion there? All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes six to zero. Item 59, also moved by amendment.
Item 59, a resolution amending the 2022-2026 capital program, health, fleet, public works, highways and streets, sponsors, the mayor.
So these are the items that are unrelated to the surplus, use of surplus funds, or they do not require an appropriation, but do require a capital program amendment. So the first one was an appropriation. It's the $115,000 grant-funded medication dispensing system for the Department of Health. And then there are four items there that you see before you, listed three, as three items in the resolution that do not require an additional appropriation from this council, but do require an amendment to the capital program. So two of the items, it's $1.13 million for a tractor dozer, $1.12 million for a landfill compactor. These were in the capital program for 2023. We're requesting to move them up to 2022. Even if we order them this year, we likely will not receive them till next year, but this will allow us to actually encumber into this will allow us to actually encumber and to order them this year, which will save us approximately $350,000 in the current marketplace. So that is the request for moving those forward. These are funded by the landfill, and so that's a non-appropriated enterprise fund, does not require an appropriation. The water reclamation fund and the water fund each have an amount of $987,520 to be amended. This is refunded by the South Dakota Department of Transportation. It's related to the 41st Street and I-29 interchange Marion Road Improvements Project. It's related to mobilization and the share of expenses between the state and the city now that the project has been bid.
All right, thanks, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 59 then? All right, any questions on this one? Counselor Sale.
I have a question on the $1.13 million for a tractor dozer. If we approve this, can we get a, can we come out and take a look at it when it comes in?
Not only that, they, I think they might even let you drive it once in a while, so as long as you're bonded and insured.
Thank you.
Move approval, Sale.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen to approve item 59. Discussion there, counsel? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightser.
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Move to item 51, please.
Item 51, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain property of the city of Sioux Falls surplus and approving gratuitous transfer of real property, sponsors, councilmembers Kylie and Sale.
Counselor Kylie.
Thank you. I think Director Cotter is going to go through the slides here. This is a state of second reading in this item. This is an aerial view of the existing South Dakota State Veterans Cemetery, which is located just north of the city, near Slip Up Creek. As you can see, the state has established a beautiful cemetery that meets the burial needs of our local veterans. The intent of this item this evening is to address immediate as well as future needs of the state Veterans Cemetery. Let's go ahead and move to the next slide, please. The, back in probably 2016, Counselor Rolfing, Rex Rolfing and I were approached by a group of veterans that informed us that we were the only state, or one of the few states, one of five states that did not have a state veterans cemetery. So at that time, we, we located, eventually located property, which is indicated as track number two on the slide here. It was dedicated in October 2018 with the support of this Sioux Falls City Council and the support of this mayor, as well as the previous mayor. We had a groundbreaking in September of 2019 for the cemetery. A ribbon cutting took place then this past Memorial Day, 2021. So we're approaching almost one year that the cemetery's been up in operation, and in that time, actually, as, as last Tuesday, there were 334 burials, and I'm sure that we've now surpassed that amount as well. So as stated previously, it's a beautiful facility and one that's meeting the needs of our veterans and their families, and they all greatly appreciate the opportunity to be buried close to home and close to relatives. Next, next slide, please. Okay, this particular slide is why we are here this evening. Track number four is, is what we're declaring a surplus, and we'd like to gift to the state of South Dakota. It is just under 14 acres, and the idea behind gifting this track of land is it can help address the parking needs of the state veterans cemetery. If any of you have been out there, you'll know that parking is at a premium, especially for the big services. So it could address that need immediately. It could also provide a second access or exit point into the cemetery, because right now there's one way in and one way out, which creates bottleneck before and after services. And sometimes services, one thing I didn't mention last week, services are scheduled back to back to back. So it makes it difficult for individuals that attended one service to exit so that the others can get in. So this would help them resolve that particular issue as well as provide for expansion of the cemetery when it, when it is needed. This allows them to control what borders them to the south. And additionally, gifting land now will aid in the improvements of Slip Up Creek Road, which are scheduled for, for this summer. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this particular slide, track number three, this is not, I want to make it clear, this is not involved in surplusing this evening or part of the gift, but this is something that Director Cotter and, and I, back in December 6th of last year, we, we met with South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs Secretary Greg Whitlock, Deputy Secretary Aaron Pollard, who you met last week, who could not be here this, this evening, and Governor Noem's staff, and pitched the proposal to a gift not only track four, but, but track three. This, this track is approximately 136 acres. It would again allow for expansion of, of the cemetery. And in addition to that, it would allow the state cemetery, again, to control what borders them to the north. The, so until this property actually would be needed for burials, the potential would exist for a trail system be established, a nature area that could be used to benefit our living veterans. Currently, the cemetery obviously benefits our deceased veterans, but this would be nice to have something in place for our living veterans, very similar to what the National Parks Service has established in their, what they call their parks for healing. And I'm going to read again a quote by Edie Joyner, U.S. Marine Corps Desert Storm Veteran. Edie stated, "Being out in nature, it's just good for the soul. It's cleansing. It gets you outside of yourself. It's my way to decompress." So this is something that we could do to give back to our living veterans until that property to the north is actually needed for, for burials. Ultimately, however, how the land is used, once it's gifted, it would be up to the state as how to best put it, put it to use. This particular property is not included this evening because over time, it was determined that because of the size and some other related items, number one, a law that states any gift in which the cost to state government exceeds $1,000 in any one year requires legislative approval. So this, this piece would have to go through the legislative process as track two did a few years back. So it's something that we're hoping to get teed up. Now, Counselor Sale has graciously accepted the responsibility to help shepherd this through the city council side so that we can get it teed up for our legislators again prior to the next legislative session. So that's all that I have. As I mentioned, Counselor, Deputy Secretary Aaron Pollard could not be here this evening. He sends his regrets, but he does, he's very grateful for the work that city employees have put into this project and, and the work that the city council has, has done as well. I will be available for any questions. Director Cotter will be available for any questions as well, too.
All right, thank you, counselor. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 51 tonight? All right, let's get a motion, then we can move in any discussion or questions here?
Move to approve.
Second.
Sale.
All right, motion by Kylie and seconded by Sale. Discussion on the council on this or questions, Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. If I can, Counselor Kylie, have, have we heard any concerns from the neighbors? Because there were concerns at the very beginning when they didn't understand what the original project was, and I think they've seen that it probably hasn't interfered with their, their property along Slip Up Creek Road is, if I remember right, is that. So I don't think you've heard any concerns or anything from anyone in the area.
I haven't heard, we have not heard any concerns.
I didn't, I didn't think so. I thought once, you know, it's the, the fear of change or the unknown, and I, I think they've seen it probably become an asset to their, their homes and the, couldn't get quieter neighbors.
Yeah, I think, actually, I think it would be a benefit to them because they would know for sure what is going to go into the south as well as to the north of the existing cemetery.
And they're getting a paved road or in addition to their paved road, and that was a, a big concern at the time, so thank you.
Sure.
Other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, let's take a.
Just, I just want to go through my list of thank yous once again, because this is something that, as I mentioned, Counselor Rolfing and I started, but there have been a lot of other individuals that have been responsible for this project. Last week, I inadvertently left out Jim David, who has helped us out on so many different projects, and that's true with this one as well. He's been constantly there as a, as a guide for me, helping me navigate the process appropriately. Mayor Tenhaken has been very supportive. Director Cotter, as I mentioned, this wouldn't be going forward, nor would the previous property for the cemetery have gone forward without Director Cotter's support. Our city attorneys, the city attorney, Coystra, and in, in particular, Assistant City Attorney Danny Brown has worked a lot on the, the gifting agreement. Andy Berg and Dustin Hanson and Rich Murphy, and our real estate members, Roy Fletcher, Matt Anderson, have all played a role in helping us move to this point. And again, a special thanks to Counselor Sale for assisting to move this forward into the next step with track three. Now, on the state end, obviously, Governor Kristi Noem, thank her for her support, the governor's staff, Secretary Greg Whitlock, and also Deputy Secretary Aaron Pollard. And I'm going to mention Jim David again, since I missed him last week.
All right, thank you, counselor. Any other discussion then on this item? All right, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightser.
Yes.
All right, that one passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Item 52, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 96, Streets and Sidewalks by adding sections 96.055 through 96.058. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4, 2022. Sponsors, the mayor.
Good evening, Andy.
Evening, Mayor, City Council, Andy Berg, Public Works, Engineering. Tonight, we're bringing forward a first reading on an amendment. The mouse is not working, so I'll just speak to it.
Jason's guy, yeah?
There we go. We're proposing an amendment to Chapter 96, Streets and Sidewalks. This amendment brings our city ordinances into alignment with the state law regarding defining sidewalks in need of repair as a public nuisance. Municipal League was a big supporter and brought this through the legislative process back in 2020 to allow this municipalities to better streamline the process for addressing accessibility matters in cities. So the primary change here is the resolution of necessity that was, is required before the process begins to bring forward the construction process for replacing those sidewalk panels. So this process creates, puts it as a nuisance, similar to other snow removals and weed complaint type things where we go in and do that work without needing that resolution of necessity. So helps move the process forward quicker so we're able to get those sidewalk panels repaired if homeowners do not do that. The process moving forward, if this ordinance change goes through, would be inspectors marking out those sidewalk defects. They would paint the panels that are required to be removed, replaced, and give them a deadline for that work. The notice of public nuisance and sidewalk repair and replacement is mailed out to the owners with that deadline. The owners then choose whether they want to repair that themselves, hire a contractor to repair it, or have the city do that work and be invoiced for it. Once that occurs, if the city does the work, then we, the owners have the option to apply for housing financial assistance, which you heard at an informational meeting a couple of weeks ago from Kevin Smith, pay the invoice directly or potentially, or go to a resolution of assessment and have that put on to their, assessed to their property. So ask for you to consider setting a second reading on this amendment and bring it back, hopefully, on the third.
All right, thank you, Andy. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 52 here tonight? Counsel, you have any questions for Andy tonight on this? Counselor Knightser, go ahead.
Would it be fair to say, as it regards to whether you go the nuisance route or the traditional route, that it may be context sensitive? Like, for example, if somebody, there's a big trip hazard and somebody trips and actively hurts himself, you may go a nuisance route and, and ask for an expedited repair versus if you just proactively find a small issue that hasn't been a problem?
The, the process, if, if we're, if a trip hazard is found or reported to us, it would go through that process I outlined. The, the piece that would be faster would be, there would not be that additional action item of setting, bringing forward to the council resolution of necessity for that property. We're able to immediately go out marked panels, notify them of the nuisance. So, yeah, it helps speed that process along. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, I was just looking for, you know, when you would invoke essentially go the route of the nuisance route, and I assume it.
The nuisance route would be for all, all identified sidewalks that are not meeting the ADA standard.
But would, I'm sorry, would may, I would assume maybe the timeline may be more accelerated if it's, you know, a major issue versus, because usually we'll give them a long, a long window, maybe six months to a year. You know, we, we work with people. We don't make them fix it in a week.
Correct, yes. Yeah, there, there's generally a longer process for allowing that. I might have Mike come up and speak, too, if we identify something that's a little bit more excessive as far as a danger to the public. Mike Hyver here with our engineering group. He's the one who runs the sidewalk program.
Sure.
Mike Hyver, Principal Engineer, Engineering. So I think it's a kind of a bigger trip hazard, is that the question, if we would tier that?
Well, you know, there's obviously a difference between, you know, you proactively do an inspection and you find a small trip hazard versus somebody calls and says, I, you know, I tripped on a big, on a thing and I just, and I, you know, busted my knee.
Yes, I would say it this way. If, if we've identified that it's a large hazard, we're going to get our, our street crew or otherwise to come out and, and, and address that issue if we can at that point in time. If it is what I would consider a small trip hazard or otherwise, we would go that public nuisance route. Timeline wise, I can speak, too. We're, we're laying it out. We're giving, at the current time, landowners about six months to, to make the repair on their own.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions this evening for either Mike or Andy on this? All right, look for a motion, and that would be to set a, a second reading for Wednesday, May 4.
Move to approve, Brecky.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Brecky, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightser.
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass six to zero. Item 53.
Item 53, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended and restated conditional gifting and naming agreement for a future cash gift, cash gift for the redevelopment of a portion of Falls Park. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4, 2022. Sponsors, the mayor.
Don, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. This is an amended and restated gifting agreement, naming agreement with the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation that really addresses the, the things that we talked about at, at the informational a couple of weeks ago regarding the scope, the timing, and the costs associated with the first phase of development at Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park. I wanted to highlight for the council a few key changes to this amended and restated agreement as it relates to the increased scope and the cost escalation, obviously the additional parking and drop off, the light, larger ice ribbon, the expanded support spaces in common areas. We expanded some of the amenities, including lighting sound and some additional architectural features. And then we also talked about the fact that it is a brownfield site with contamination that we'll have to do some specialty construction to make sure that we do it the right way and, and keep in the good races with our, our friends at the South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources. Another key piece is, is that both parties have agreed to increase their respective investments to $5 million. to increase their respective investments to $5.5 million for the first phase of this project. Other key changes include the revised timeline. We'll plan to go to bid this summer, start construction this fall, and have a grand opening in fall of 2023. As it relates to Phase Two, as a reminder, Phase Two includes, as a general rule, the, the dog park, the splash pad, and the event lawn and shelter. The agreement identifies an opportunity for the city to use its best efforts to complete Phase Two within three to five years. And obviously, that's subject to city council approval and appropriation at that time. We did bring this amended and restated agreement to the Parks and Recreation Board on April 13, and the Parks and Rec Board did recommend approval. So to close, I do have Robin Hellman here in the audience with us as well to answer any questions you might have. And with that, any other questions for us?
All right, thanks, Don. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item 53 tonight? All right, Counsel, you have any questions for, for Don on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Star?
Yes, thank you, Director. Would the splash pad in the Phase Two be something we'd consider in the pool bonding or the quality of life bonding that we're taking a look at? Or would that be outside of that? Would that be something we could propose? Or would that fit somewhere else as, to get the funding to complete Phase Two?
As of right now, we've not considered it as part of that quality of life bond. But I, I kind of just need to visit with Sean about that.
He's making this great face in the background. It's not much of a poker face, but we'll see how he brings that up. So, thank you.
I suppose legally, it's possible whether or not we'll.
It just seems like a splash pad fits in with pool renovations and quality of life. So that might be a place for us to fund it because I think there's a, an agreement that getting to that next phase and completing those things is probably a priority for part of the group or most of the group. So maybe take a look at that as a way of funding it.
Other questions for Don on this item tonight? All right, then I'd look for a motion. That would be to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4.
Move to approve.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale. On that, any discussion amongst the council here? All right, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Next item, please.
Item 54, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located 911 and 913 West Sixth Street from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District number 15824-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4, 2022. Private applicant, Adam Asmus.
Jason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is Adam Asmus. It's located at 911 and 913 West Sixth Street. It's about .31 acres in size. The current property is, is a duplex, and the applicant is looking at constructing some additional units with, inside the existing structure.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 54? Counsel, any questions for Jason here? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4.
Move to approve.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion Kylie, seconded by Brecky. On that, any discussion here? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item 55, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of Interstate 90 and west of North Marion Road from the AG Agriculture District to the I-1 Light Industrial District number 15881-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4, 2022. Private applicant, Great Hall Properties LLC, Jonathan Casper.
The applicant here is Great Hall Properties. The owner is Stephen Lenthey. It's located at the southwest corner of North Marion Road and I-90. It's about 65.41 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to develop three light industrial buildings.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on item 55? All right, Counsel, you have any questions for Jason here? Look for a motion then to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4.
So moved, Knightser.
Second, Sale.
Okay, motion by Knightser, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Next item?
Item 56, first reading and.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Knightser?
I'm sorry, city clerk. I need to recuse myself from this item because the subject property is within 300 feet of a property that I own.
Got it. You are recused.
Item 56, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West 32nd Street and east of South Ellis Road from the POPUD pedestrian oriented PUD district to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar and C3 Commercial Community Districts number 16090-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, approval five to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4, 2022. Private applicant, Schmitz Calda and Associates Incorporated, Kim Buell.
The applicant here is Kim Buell. The owner is Ronnie Enterprises. It's located south of East 30, or excuse me, West 32nd Street and east of South Ellis Road. It's about 13.82 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to construct a future retail development on the property.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 56? All right, Counsel, you have any questions for Jason on this one?
I'd move to set a, set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4, 2022.
Second.
All right, motion by Starr, seconded by Sale. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero. Counsel Knightser, it's back. We'll move to item 57.
Item 57, first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of East 41st Street and east of South Line Drive Avenue from the AG Agriculture District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District number 16113-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4, 2022. Private applicant, Cynthia Coystra.
The applicant owner here is Cynthia Coystra. It's located at the southeast corner of East 41st Street and South Line Drive Avenue. It's about 5.92 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing four three-story apartment buildings, 24-unit apartment buildings, as well as garages on site.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 57 tonight? All right, Counsel, you got any questions for Jason here? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, May 4.
So moved.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass six to zero. Counsel, we got any new business to cover tonight? All right, we'll move to public input. Just as a reminder, public input's three minutes per person on items we didn't discuss earlier. So come on forward for general public input. Good evening.
Good evening. Chester DeYoung, Sioux Falls. The city attorney, Mr. Coystra, I'd like to thank you for having Mark Cotter give me a call. We had a meeting on Friday. I considered it informational in nature only. The facts, city engineering and planning and zoning together, bring together, to bring to the city commission to vote either to approve or disapprove new streets, vacation, zoning and stuff. After this process, it takes a couple of years to see the results. Most of the time, everything works out like the city plans. Sometimes it does not. That's my case. The following things have happened within 700 feet of my house. 2009, 10, when the city was pushed forward and planned and agreed to set zoning standards for a total of 100 residential units on the land at 5,000 East Grand Street and vacate Marquette Avenue and Taylor Street. It sounded good at the time. In 2014, May in fact, they discovered the city gave away their easements for the existing sewer main, along with all their other utility easements. Easements are not cheap. It will cost. April 16 of 2014, the city implemented shapes and places without notifying the surrounding neighbors. No signage was ever posted. In October of, November of 2019, the city discovered they had another issue. Shapes and places doubled the number of residents allowed on the property at 5,000 East Grand Street, causing the city to be in violation of their own Street Design Standard 8. In 2019, 20, the city permitted the sand volleyball courts to be designed and installed on Grand Street. In 2021, the city planning and zoning discovered that five sand volleyball courts with only three parking spots is not as good a idea as they thought it would be. The city's plan, while the existing neighbors, they can just deal with it. The city caused it, but the neighbors are going to deal with it. I understand that two of the issues were created by previous engineers and council members. However, it's time that the city council and the city engineers step up and take responsibility for what they have created. The city has rules and standards that they enforce on every citizen, contractor, and developer in the city of Sioux Falls. They know their rules. Yes, they are responsible for public safety. However, I cannot find a single sentence that says when the city messes up, they have the ability to say, no, we don't have to follow our rules. We are above our rules. I really look forward over the next five months or six months, however long it takes, to get the city to figure out the right way to fix the street, to talk about this because I got time. You guys have a great night.
All right. Anyone else for public input tonight?
I've been working in that neighborhood on those issues. I'm going to tell you, it's, it's a mess. So he is right. The city went and violated some of their laws or whatever not. And so I had a talk with Andy to see how we can come up with a solution before it becomes into civil litigation with the neighbors and the city because this lawsuit will be hindrance. I want to thank Andy for reaching out to that neighborhood to mitigate something in that neighborhood. It was a mess from the start. I'm not going to say that the city was totally honest because there's, I, I, I've seen the whole plan out, and it's horrible what the city did. So in upcoming months, I think that Andy and the city behind closed doors is going to negotiate and meet this neighborhood halfway. And then Andy said that after the process of this is going to get out the way of Phase One and Phase Two, we're going to have a neighborhood meeting and with, with the issues of other stuff like the sidewalks, this, that, the other. I feel the frustration from the neighbors. I feel the frustration about what the city has done and, and their faults of it. But this is why I tell people, when development happens in neighborhoods, when stuff happens in neighborhoods, be on top of stuff, to make sure that the city is binding by the laws, rules, and regulations. I had stress to Andy and stress to Andy and stress to Andy that we need to come to compromise with this neighborhood because we don't need to go into litigation of a civil suit with them and the city. So I, I think that the city will compromise and meet this neighborhood halfway on these issues here. And we're going to have a neighborhood meeting about putting in some sidewalks because people has wheelchairs in that area and, and we need to put those sidewalks in because it needs to be ADA compliant here. But I'm not going to bash the city, but it's, it's, it is what it is. Fifty-fifty here. So I'm going to tell citizens, when you get involved in your neighborhood and stuff happens in your neighborhood, be on top of it. So we don't have this problem again with the city stepping over boundaries or favoritism or whatever the deal might have been in. And I'm not going to get into the details.
Are there anyone else for public input tonight? Come on up.
Greetings. I'm David Zokitis, and tonight's topic is participatory government. I, I have, well, we should have these goals as a democracy. Government should care about the citizens and respond to citizens. There should be a lot of interaction between politicians and citizens. Make a big difference in modern life. Now, to figure out what citizens want, I think it would be beneficial to go out and talk to them. Because email between citizens and city council is just not the whole story. You know, you could have a random lunch with random people and see what's going on with, with everybody, maybe with the department heads and city council members, all that stuff. In terms of what really happens at city council meetings, the administration is pretty much in control. Everybody generally just goes along for the ride. But we could change that dynamic by converting city council members from, or councillors from part-time to full-time, and we could utilize the public to create better laws. Something that might help government interaction is the ombudsman recommended by Counselor Janet Brecky. Public input, I think we could do better by giving it more value and putting it a different part of the meeting. Oh, and people who talk should be contacted by a city representative. I think that would, that would help interaction. Now, now here's something that might really make a big difference. People will see ordinances in the first reading, but by that time, it's pretty much already been set. Instead, you could have a, a preliminary reading of just the rough ideas and kind of an open discussion between council and citizens. Oh, and this would make a change. Anytime there is a controversial vote, it'd be nice if city councils and the mayor would explain their vote so that we know what's really going on. Now, because of the dynamics of how government really works and oligarchy and plutocracy and stuff, I don't really expect this to happen anytime soon. But it's all good ideas. And there has to be a landscape. So today, we got a skyscape instead. It was a stormy sky last week, and I thought it was beautiful. So here it is tonight, and hope you all have a good evening.
All right, anyone else for public input this evening? All right, seeing none, I'd look for a motion to adjourn us.
Move to adjourn.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Brecky. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?